I'd like to call this meeting Lakewood City Council for Monday, December 16th, to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Barth.
President.
Councilmember Bokey has been excused. Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whelan.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Well, thank you. Now, would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to proclamations and presentations. The first item of business is a presentation of the 2019 storefront decorating contest winner. And for this, we have Ms. Linda Smith, CEO of the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce. Linda.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thanks for having me here this evening. I just wanted to do a quick, quick review, and then we'll go ahead and get to the, to the winners. The Lakewood Chamber's goal is to support and promote economic development in the city of Lakewood. And we all know that an attractive building or street encourages buyers to take a second look. And that's what our objective is. Have people take another look at Lakewood as a great place to shop and visit. So, we've also been encouraging our business community and our residents to display blue lights for the holiday season as a citywide initiative. Many of you might not be aware of this, but the city council adopted blue lights as our official Christmas colors, what was that, back in 2010? Was that? And we just, we haven't been very vocal or proactive about asking our community to get involved. And so, that's, that's a goal of the chamber, to, to see our businesses light up in blue for the holiday season. It's a tradition that started back in the 1930s at the Lakewood Colonial Center. And it's the starting point this year, and we hope to see more and more of Lakewood lit up in blue as the years progress. So, what we did was, we, we created a mashup of our annual storefront decorating contest, and with our blue light initiative.
And we invited our local businesses to decorate their storefronts. And since the photographs, blue lights earn extra points. This was awesome.
The margin between the top two entrances was extremely narrow. We had to count and recount, as a matter of fact, just to make double sure. Both have provided us with gorgeous displays. I don't know. I submitted photographs, and I don't know if we can show those photos. So, you will see that Lakeview Light &amp; Power is up. And then, we have the Pet Doctor. And it's, it's very dark and hard to see, but it is extremely blue, extremely colorful. So, let's go ahead and get down to the winners of this year's storefront decorating contest. Honorable mention goes to Lakeview Light &amp; Power and Dr. Allan Hart, who is a board member and treasurer of Lakeview Light &amp; Power, is here to accept the award. Doctor. And first place goes to the Pet Doctor. Is Katrina McGrath here? Come on up, Katrina.
Our next item is a proclamation calling for Lakewood ceasefire. And I'd invite Ms. Candace Wesley to join Councilmember Mary Moss at the podium. If she's not here, another member of the committee that requested this, please.
I know it looks like it's a lot of us, but we move as a unit.
That's okay. That's, that's all good. Thank you all for being here. Now, a few weeks ago, you did present the council with the proclamation requesting support in a ceasefire for Tacoma. And we wanted you to know that we, we share your concerns with the deaths and killings of our youth. So, tonight, I would like to present this proclamation to you. It reads, "Whereas our region has seen a spike in acts of gun violence and tragic losses of life in 2019, and whereas we keenly feel each loss of life and share the immeasurable sadness felt by families of crime victims, and we acknowledge the deep impact these events have on our community's sense of safety. And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to fighting crime, reducing violence, and making every neighborhood safer. And whereas the Lakewood Police Department has made disrupting this cycle of violence a priority. And whereas the city has invested in resources that help families and youth prevent this, so, prevent and suppress gang violence in our community. And whereas Lakewood's best resource when resolving the city's most complex issues is our people, and we believe deeply that our residents, churches, government partners, service organizations, and community leaders each play a key role in the health of our neighborhoods. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Lakewood does hereby call for a ceasefire and proclaim every day from here forward in the prudency of our, in perpetuity, as a day of Lakewood ceasefire in the city, and urge the residents to join us in partnership, solidarity, strength, and standing against violence of all kinds in the city of Lakewood. Proclaim this day, the sixteenth, sixteenth day of December 2019. Signed, Don Anderson, Mayor."
Join us down here, please.
Good evening.
Toni, Koshin, Jetta.
Fred, where are you?
Where's Jetta?
On behalf of Tacoma Ceasefire, I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you. What you see here, the reason I was adamant about us all coming together is because we move as a unit. What you see here with me today is a compilation of men that have decided to come forward and make change in our city. You also see residents and supporters of Lakewood. We have Frederick Garner. We have Terrence. We have Conjetta. We have Tony Hurd. And we have Terrence. Where are you? These are citizens of Lakewood. I also live in Lakewood, that we would like to strengthen and support organizations and agencies that are actually doing the work to bring about a change in our community. So, on behalf of Tacoma Ceasefire, we'd like to thank you for the proclamation. And we look forward to having a conversation or dialogue, if you will, as it relates to combining our efforts together and collaborating. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, I'd, with a certain degree of regret, ask Councilmember Marie Barth to join me at the podium.
So, really don't have prepared remarks. You know, it seems like yesterday, but it was nearly nine years ago, that I sat across the table from Marie, and she was saying, "Do I really want to do this?" And she did. And she's been a great contributor over the last eight years to Lakewood City Council, a real sounding board for the community, because she, like Linda, knows everybody. And she is well-prepared. She is measured in her responses. She is thoughtful. She has been a great contributor, a great team member. And more important than that, a friend. And so, we're really going to miss her. She's got another phase of her life, which is going to take her to Montana to be my family and new adventures. Also, there's Bruce. Bruce is going to have to get ri, get used to having her around all the time.
Poor guy.
They've had kind of a long-distance relationship for the last few years, as he's worked in, in Montana a lot. But we're really sorry to see her go. And I'll give my contemporaries a chance to say a couple of words before we take our photo down here. But I'd like to present Marie with a commemorative plaque that is but a small token, or but more importantly, a remembrance of your time with us. Reads, "Marie Barth, Councilmember, January 1st, 2012 to December 31st, 2019. In honor and sincere appreciation of your exceptional leadership and outstanding service to the Lakewood community, your hard work and dedication have contributed to the success of those around you and the city as a whole. Presented by the Lakewood City Council, the 16th day of December 2019." Now, I'd like to offer my contemporaries on the council a chance to say a few words before we give Linda about 30 seconds for rebuttal. I mean, Marie. I'm looking right at Linda. Give Marie 30 seconds for rebuttal. Mr. Whelan?
Well, thank you. I, I want to start with an anecdotal story. About 14 years ago, Marie graciously hosted my wife and me in her conference room at Designated Escrow years ago, when I first started thinking about running for council, and it was a meet and greet. And my wife was pregnant, eight months pregnant at the ti, actually, nine months pregnant at the time. And while we were having a great group of realtors there and a chance to chat, my wife kept nudging me, saying, "I think it's time to go." I said, "Ah, we got plenty of time. I think it's time to go." "Oh, no, we're fine." It was time to go. And our third daughter was born that evening, as a result of our wonderful time together with Marie and Bruce and many members of your team. It's been a long ride, and we really appreciated the time together. You have been a friend of not only small business and the voice of small business in this community, but a friend of many, many folks from all walks of life here in Lakewood, and, most importantly, to our family, a friend, to Galen, to me. Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. I want to follow up on what, coincidentally, what Deputy Mayor Whelan just said. There was a time in my life where it was a little dark. And I said something to Marie. And in an unprompted, unconditional way, she offered me any help I needed. That's the kind of action, Marie, that a person never forgets. And it also is the true measure of who you are. So, I say thank you and good luck.
Mr. Branstadter?
Well, Marie, it's been a pleasure, eight years of having you here. And it's been a tremendous help to me. You serve as a, not only as support, but as a, as a great sounding board at times of when I was not necessarily sure exactly which way I wanted to go on, on a number of things. And I think that, you know, as everyone on the council brings strengths that helped make us a good team over the past eight years, you know, your strength was your depth of engagement with Lakewood, both, or, both over time and through your continued active engagement with so many different groups and folks here, and, and an understanding of them, and in being able to articulate to the rest of us what their, what their thoughts and meanings are. And that's, so, there, you've not only served us as a colleague, but you've served the community extremely well in that regard.
What I would like to say is, you can't go. But I do remember the days that we shared, visiting the different businesses in the community and getting to know more about each other. I miss that. And I'm going to miss you, because we had the bookends pretty much to where we could keep these guys in the middle, under control. But we, I'm going to miss you, and I wish you all the best. Merry Christmas.
And now, it's time for rebuttal, but I think there was one strength of Marie's that we forgot to mention, and it's that she brings treats. And so, we're, we're going to miss that, too.
Okay.
Right?
Well, thank you all. I am going to miss all of you. But I won't be, I'll be thrilled to have a Monday night back. So, I haven't watched a Monday night football game in eight years. So, I did jot down some things, but I was going to share these at the end, because I didn't know we were doing this. And I thought, well, I don't want to get emotional, so I'll write it out and I'll read it. So, "The past eight years have been a fantastic learning experience for me. I'm honored to have served our community with you, and I want to thank you all for all you've taught me. I look around our community, and I see the improvements that we and our predecessors have made. And I'm proud of the work that we've all done, the policies we've implemented, and the direction our community is headed. For the next two years, I'll be concentrating on my real estate businesses here, and then off to Montana for the new adventure with Bruce and the family. I'm the only one left here, so I just, I have to go there. Thank you all for your kindness, and especially your friendship." And you touched on this, each one of you, which was really sweet. But there's an old saying by Dr. Seuss, aptly, and it says, "Don't cry because it's over. Smile because it happened." And you all have made me smile.
Thank you.
I would be negligent by not thanking the Lakewood Police Department, my friends there, very special friends. And just knowing that Lakewood is safe in their hands, I thank you and salute all of you in blue. And a special thanks to Mayor Emeritus, General Bill Harrison. One of the reasons, another reason, other than Mayor Anderson, the two mayors, and Doug Richardson, are the ones that spurred me to do this. So, again, thank you very much. You've all become very good friends, so thanks.
Now, we move to the public comment section. Now, we move to the public comment section of our agenda. That's when any member of the public may speak of, on any issue of interest to the council. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Marie Barth, Lakewood, Washington. You have three minutes to speak. Your light comes on at three-second warning. Red light comes on when your time is up. I would note that while you, there is a public hearing tonight on Proposition 1, the Clover Park School District levy. And if you wish to speak on the public, at the public hearing, that will be a separate agenda item. You may speak on that or any other issue on the open session of public comment, but it won't be on the record. So, in public comment, the first person who signed up is Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. Thank you, Marie. I got a notice today, this one, from the city, that says, "DeLong's Drive-In is going to be demolished." That Bridgeport 11 LLC is going in, which I assume is going to be a 7-Eleven gas station, and many more. Thirty-two-hundred square feet of retail space, fuel pumps. There's a wood frame fence that separates my property from the 7-Eleven. And the vent is right next to the wood fence. Great place for a gas vent. Got a skate park across the street that partially has left the neighborhood with years of nonstop graffiti. The park, DeLong's, and my property. I've had cars stolen, windows broken, break-ins, vehicle windshield smashed, paintball buildings, injection needles all over my yard, food wrappers from every kind of restaurant there is around Lakewood. Apartment dwellers walk by all day and night to the gas station, which is directly across the corner from where this new one's supposed to go. Recently, there was a shooting in that gas station across the corner, and it broke out windows on the opposite side of the street. I've lived there for 42 years, ran an antique shop, as well as lived there. I asked Becky Newton a couple of weeks ago what was happening with DeLong's, and she didn't know at the time. I do have three acres on Hood Canal, which I could move my antique shop and have a beach house. Ask yourself, do you want a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week, 7-Eleven store next to your home, or your business, or, in my case, both? Fuel trucks going up and down Fair Lawn, through the traffic circle. City would not allow me, or allow DeLong's to have a drive-through, but they now allow a gas station to have a good drive-through. Thank you.
To all the people who have signed up for public comment, does anyone else wish to speak at public comment? Please step forward. So, if anyone else wishes to speak at public comment and hasn't signed up, please queue up behind the speaker, so that we can take you expeditiously.
Lakewood, or Dennis Algen, Lakewood, Washington. We're just not going to play the video, because President Trump has spent so many hours, time, work, competence, working with black leaders. And this is just the time that he signed the Opportunity Zone bill. If you recall, when Trump was elected, much of the news media immediately began to slander him with words like bigot, and all those words, putting those adjectives wherever they could. He put in the work. He put in the time. And he's competent about how to set up economic incentives, so something happens positive. Well, guess what? Those opportunity zones must have worked, because probably one of the hardest block of voters in the United States to impress by the Republican Party or a Republican is blacks. Now, we've got polls coming out showing 35 percent, the black population is behind Trump. How did he get that? He got it because he earned it. He made a promise. He went to work on it the first day he was in office, beginning to invite all kinds of black leaders into the White House, young leaders, kids, medium-aged leaders, top leaders. leaders, top leaders, economic leaders, and they put in 9,000 Opportunity Zones. Well, they must be pretty good, because now there's all kinds of speakers and blogs by black people that they, they're happy because of the opportunity. And one of the things, I think, kids, it's very important to get kids working. So they learn how to, they learn how to get up in the morning, be someplace on time, and be responsible. Many things I've heard from black leaders that you won't hear from the mainstream media. All they want to do is just criticize Trump. Now, they need to take that screen and put a big one up in New York, right where all of the ABC anchors and the NBC anchors and all the anchors look out the window. And then when Danny Heck calls in to get his orders from CNN, he'll see, look through the window and see Trump looking at him. But no, the man has done a fabulous job. In order to know that, you gotta read and look at some other news sources.
That's all the people who've signed up or showed up to speak at public comment. Does anyone else wish to speak at public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public comment? Seeing hearing none, I declare public comment closed. Now move to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, we're going to consider the consent agenda minus item G.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council Study Session of November 25, 2019. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of December 2, 2019. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council Special Meeting of December 5, 2019. D, motion number 2019-80, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Northeast Electric, LLC, increasing spending in the amount of $46,740.49 for the 2019 citywide electrical repair project. E, motion number 2019-81, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between the City of Auburn, City of Bonny Lake, City of Lakewood, City of Puyallup, City of Tacoma, Pierce County Sheriff, Pierce County Prosecuting Attorney, and Washington State Department of Corrections for the Tacoma Narcotics Enforcement Team. F, motion number 2019-82, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between the cities of Lakewood and University Place and Pierce County Fire District 3 for Emergency Management Services. H, ordinance number 725, amending Lakewood Municipal Code Chapter 8, 16010, and creating Chapter 8, 1690, abandoned shopping carts. And I, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk, 1, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of October 22, 2019, and 2, Lakewood Arts Commission Meeting Minutes of November 4, 2019.
Thank you. Is there any other item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? I entertain a motion for adoption of the consent agenda less item G.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We now will consider substitute ordinance number 724. Madam Clerk.
Substitute ordinance number 724, amending Chapter 3.09 of the Lakewood Municipal Code to create a fiduciary fund for custodial activities.
Thank you. You've been provided with a copy of substitute ordinance number 724. There's an error in the original agenda. Entertain a motion. Second. It's been moved by Mr. Branstad. Seconded by Mr. Whalen. We adopt substitution ordinance number 724. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. We now move to public hearings and appeals. Madam Clerk.
This is the date set for a public hearing on Proposition Number 1, Clover Park School District Number 400 Replacement Educational Programs and Operations Levy coming before the voters on February 11, 2020.
Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. I'm Heidi and Walker, the City Attorney for the City of Lakewood. You have, over the years, dealt with a number of different propositions and so forth, and as you know by now, because you've done this a number of times, one of the procedural requirements is that you hold a public hearing before you can take a public stand as a council on an issue such as this. And so tonight, you are meeting that procedural requirement. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Walker? Seeing none, I thank you.
Thank you.
So the rules for speaking at the public hearing on the Clover Park School District Replacement Educational Programs and Operations Levy are very similar to the rules for public comment that we just went through. You're given three minutes to speak. Your light comes on at 30-second warning. Red light comes on when your time is up. The difference is, with respect to the public hearing, your comments should be limited to the issue at hand, which is the Clover Park School District Levy. The first person who signed up to speak is Carrie Hills.
Mayor and council members, thank you for taking comments on the proposed education levy. Before I begin, I'd like to request additional time to speak on behalf of citizens for responsible educational funding, as I was approved by the school board to write the against statement in the voter's guide. My name is Carrie Hills. I live here in Lakewood. I grew up in Lakewood, and I attended Clover Park School System from kindergarten through 12.
Mr. Hills, as a matter, you'll get your full three minutes at least. Are there other members of your group here tonight?
No, not tonight.
Okay, so you're limited to three minutes, but you reset the clock for him, please.
So my name is Carrie Hills. I grew up in Lakewood. I attended Clover Park School System from K through 12. As the district's own mission statement notes, it's their job to, quote, "ensure each child learns what he or she needs to know to succeed and contribute to the community." As I have mentioned before, the district is currently failing, and for many years has, to fully educate the students of our community and meet their mission statement. As we all know, it's difficult to fully contribute to the community with a less-than-adequate education. This is not my own personal opinion, however, these are the facts as published by the Office of Public Instruction, OPI. The information shows that over 56% of the students are not meeting the standards set by the state. We expect the state to fully fund education, which it has through the McLeary decision, so why do we allow the district to fall short on their commitment to the students? Last year, only 52% of 9th graders passed all of their classes, according to OPI. I'm quite sure that when I was in school, anything less than 60% was failing, and F is the grade our district currently earns. In fact, the information from OPI goes even deeper to show that both in math and science, the longer a student stays in the district, the more likely they are to fail to meet the standards. While about 40% of 5th graders meet the standards in math and science, only about 30% of 10th and 11th graders meet that same standard. At last week's board meeting, a school, at the board meeting, one of the members, board members, asked if the best way, quote, "is to measure the student's success, is by testing." This statement only increases my concern, as it shows that the facts are being ignored, and there may be little desire to correct the shortcomings of the current system at the district. As I mentioned before, the McLeary decision already fully funds Clover Park School District, but this district, unlike many, also gets a great deal of military impact aid. And education in the state of Washington, on average, is $11,000 per student per year. In Clover Park School District, the taxpayers are spending an additional $5,000 more per student per year. To that, I ask, why should we continue to spend those extra dollars when the district produces consistently low test scores? At the start of each school year, we hear that some district has gone on strike, and the news reports better teacher pay and smaller classes will improve education. While I'm not convinced that continuing to throw good money at a failing education system is an adequate resolution for the board to fund, but the board funded significant teacher raises last year in Clover Park. Do you realize an underpaid teacher earns? The Kitsap Sun published all teachers' wages statewide. The publication, you can look up and find your own teachers paid. A beginning teacher earns about $50,000 a year, while some veteran teachers are earning over $100,000 a year. I was going to quote some stuff from the Gates Foundation, but obviously, I'm short on time. I urge you to vote no on this resolution. I don't believe the taxpayers are getting their money's worth as far as the school goes. They're failing to educate our kids. Vote no tonight, and vote no on the levy in February. Thank you.
The next person who signed up is Mr. John Arbeening.
John Arbeening, City of Lakewood. I rise in opposition to the proposed levy. This proposed levy has an annual increase per year of 6%. Tell me what other government, or even private, cost of living has gone up that much. Perhaps the school board needs to get a dose of reality and take a look at the community in which they serve, and the flat or declining enrollment. We spent more per student here than many other districts that outperform us. The thing about this is, is the levy is based on rising property values, even at the same $2.50 mill rate, rather than any demonstrable increase in the cost or benefit to education. As property values climb, the education levy tags along for the ride and gets to fill out their dream list. Clover Park budget shouldn't be expanded just to soak up the revenue from a hope-for-inflated housing market. This levy proposal hands Clover Park a blank check hinged on the vagaries of local real estate market, rather than the cost of benefit to education. City of Lakewood did this exact same thing in 2007, when they banked on the increase in housing values and sales tax. And in 2008, they ran into a brick wall with the recession and the housing collapse. This is what Clover Park is setting itself up for. Throwing money at the problem of education is not the solution, but part of the problem. CP must, Clover Park must be held accountable for levies ostensibly for improving our children's education. We need measurable goals, not just generalities, for each levy before we support it. Things like graduation rates, college admissions, test scoring, student competency, and so forth. The board and staff also need to be held individually accountable for any failure to achieve these goals. That's what we hired them for. We cannot continue to pour our money into a system that's failing. Give us more money, people, and stuff, so we can do it poorly faster, isn't a reason to pass this levy. It's smoke, it's a smokescreen that covers real systemic problems at Clover Park School District. Rather, the school district needs to change how it operates to turn things around where it matters most: student achievement and education. Thank you.
Next person who's signed up is Malcolm Russell.
Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Malcolm Russell. I'm a lifelong resident here of Lakewood, Washington. My family's lived here for over 100 years. I live here, work here, have a business here, invest here, have properties here, and I have kids at the schools, both Hutloch and Lakes High School. I'm a product of the Clover Park School District, Park Lodge, Idowild, Hutloch, Clover Park. And I rise in support of our schools and our community, because I think supporting our community is supporting our schools. You hear throwing money is a pejorative, but it's not about throwing money, it's about investing in our community and what's right and best for our students. Talk about McLeary and funding education. While they do fully fund basic education, and if basic education is good enough for this community, then I'm not sure I agree with that. I think we need to fully fund and invest beyond basic education in our community, and that's what this levy measure intends to do. The people that support this levy want to support extracurricular activities, security, safety, maintenance, the things that make schools great. Testing is one way to measure academic success, but I rise in support of our district and our community, because I believe in it, I believe in our city, and I believe in our schools. I stand to rise in support of our award-winning School District Board of Directors and the members of it. I stand to stand behind our schools and our programs, and our special programs, like the Four Heroes and the IB program at Idowild, which is actually a K through 12 program, which continues on after that. I stand to rise in support of our staff, our administrators, and our teachers that are working so hard for our kids and our community. And I stand to rise also for our military, too, because we really are the front line of educating kids from all over America that get stationed here. So de-investing and taking funds and resources away from our community is not the right approach, and I don't support it, and I support this levy, and I support investing in our community and our schools, and I'm not the only one. There's other people here, maybe just a show of hands, of people that support this. So our community, and I'm out in the community quite a bit, supports investing in our community and our schools for what's good for not only our community, but also our kids and for our military. So I urge you to support the levy measure.
That's all the people who've signed up to testify at public hearing on the Clover Park School District levy. If anyone else wishes to speak, that you still can, please queue up behind the microphone and identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Tiffany Smith Fromm. I was born in Tacoma and raised in Lakewood. I'm a product of Oakwood Elementary, yay, Lockburn Junior High, Go Lions, and Clover Park High School. I was a kid at one time that was being raised by a single mother. We were poor, but I knew that when I went to school, that I was safe, that I was going to be exposed to arts, music, spelling bees, and that my teachers cared for me. I now have five children, and I'm really proud of them. They attend Idowild, Manon Lakes. Our youngest goes to a private pre-K class in Tacoma. I work for Pierce College, and I'm an RN by trade. I value education greatly, however, I also value taking care of my community, especially our children and elderly. I believe in supporting this levy for the following reasons, some of which Malcolm already mentioned. It doesn't raise taxes beyond what we've seen over the last four years. It supports readiness programs beyond basic education. These interventions are things like extra help for students who need it, or highly capable of students who need extra challenges. It helps maintain class sizes. It supports AP courses and IB testing. It supports staff with training around student readiness and security enhancements, not just security at schools, but staff training around security, and most importantly, staff training around mental health and behavior and interventions, which is very important in our community. It enhances the quality of music, art, and performing arts education that our children receive. It also puts us in line, from a technological perspective, to keep up with the workforce needs in Washington State. We live in a community where our Lakewood City Council just signed a ceasefire, or is going to at least. Support additional resources for education, especially mental health, equals more graduating students and less crime. That's a fact. I believe in supporting those that will someday take care of me. Our children will be tasked with making decisions for tomorrow, and I want them to know they are our future, and we support them, because one day, they will be supporting us. Western states up the road, we should be acutely aware of mental health problems. Unfortunately, one out of five children will be diagnosed with a mental health problem by age 14. They will, they do better, we know, when they stay in school and when they have the supports necessary. We have a diverse district, serving all types of people, and sometimes, we're not sure about the inequities that they face. We cannot appreciate those. Having these additional resources will hopefully fill gaps for our students. Military, I love our families, our military families. We continue to serve a high population of our military students at 27.5%, and we want to make sure that their sacrifice of being here in our district is well-supported, that their children are well-supported where they're gone. By now, I'm sure you've guessed, I fully support the levy and hope that members of our community will do the same, regardless of if you have children or grandchildren attending school in Clover Park School District. You are a member of the community, and so, and you are a member of a community that so heavily values its children, their education, and the future of Lakewood. I hope you can find your way to approving the Clover Park School District levy on February 11, 2020. Thank you.
Next, please.
Dennis Algen, Lakewood, Washington. You know, test scores probably aren't the most perfect way of measuring what a student has learned, but there aren't any, there are no other ways that can be proven to be better. 30 years of doing real estate as a real estate broker in Lakewood, had people ask me over and over and over again about the test scores. Then pretty soon, always in the schools talking about, oh, we can't have test scores. It hurts their feelings. And of course, I haven't looked at the test scores for five years, but there's a lot of stuff going on around out there about public education, that possibly, and if this is not, if this is not just, if this is... and if this is not, if this is not just, if this is just a rumor, then you better get up and prove to the people, the parents and the teachers, that it is a rumor. But there's word going around that schools are politically indoctrinating rather than teaching. And that's something you need to be, instead of coming here asking for the council to support you, you need to be out there facing the public, talking to the taxpayer, looking them in the eye, telling them what you're doing to increase the child's education. This is very nebulous. What's it say? Replacing education programs? Why didn't you dare spell it out? You write this like people are fools. Come on. You know what an education is for? Go out there and talk to the public. Go out there and talk to the people that pay for it. Show them that you're doing what the public expects you to do. Don't come here and try to get the council to support you. That's not what their business is. You're just, this is another way of just being political. Come on, stand up. Stand up to the problem. You don't need to come here, try to be political. Face the problem. People expect them to read, write, and math. Tell them why or why not. You've got people in your industry, somebody from Seattle, well, sure, it may not be you. Some math professor says mathematics is racist. Any of you stand against that statement? Mathematics is not racist. Mathematics is something everybody needs.
My name is Darwin Peters. I am a resident of Lakewood. Myself and my wife are products of Clover Park School District, Hartwood, Carter Lake, Woodbrook, and Clover Park High School. We currently have four kids across three schools within the district, and I am here in support of the levy. I, too, was at the district meeting and/or the board meeting, and the question that was actually asked was not, are test scores the measure? What it was was, what does success look like? Meaning, do we just look at test scores and determine that to be the measure of success? And my answer to that is no. Success for our students is more than just test scores. It's actually building well-rounded students. At 6 o'clock, me and my wife were at my son's winter concert for Oak Brook Elementary, and as I watched these kids perform, I thought about one of the skills that they're learning: being able to perform or interact in front of public. Those are lifelong skills that our students could possibly miss without the funding of this levy, as we know that music and arts is partially funded by that. Safety of our students. The levy is funds our contracts with the City of Lakewood for school resource officers, right? Our students deserve to be in an environment where they're safe, secure, and they don't have to worry about some of the other things that other schools may have to worry about. Extracurricular activities are proven to improve student engagement. A study by the U.S. Census shows that it helps improve from 32 percent without extracurricular activities to 41 percent. That's almost a 10 percent increase. So when we talk about our students being more engaged in school, extracurricular activities are a part of that, also funded by the levy. Our school district is a school district that is focused on providing not just a basic education for our students but an equitable education for our students, which is extremely important when we live in a district that serves one of, that is one of the most diverse districts in the state. So a basic education is not going to do. An education that is just the standard or just the minimal for students across the board is not going to do. We have an award, state-recognized board, that is determined to provide equity, meaning that is going to aim to meet the needs of each student regardless of those barriers or in spite of those barriers. Test scores don't just talk about what the students are learning inside those four walls as we know that students face many other barriers inside or outside of the school within their own homes. So by funding or supporting the levy, we are supporting a district that looks for the four-pillar construct, which is creating lifelong learners, students that know how to collaborate, build character, and leadership. I support the levy, and I hope that you guys will.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Ken Sevier. I've lived in Lakewood since 1977. My oldest daughter graduated from Clover Park High School, and I've supported every levy since before I had kids and since I've had kids, but I'm wondering if I should support this levy. The report card from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction says that at Clover Park High School, only 17 percent of the people meet the minimum math standards, 18 percent meet the minimum science standards, and 54 percent meet the English language arts, but they make a graduation rate of 74 percent. Math doesn't make 17 and 18 percent and 74 percent don't, don't make up in my mind that that's a valid graduation rate. 10 percent of the students have discipline problems at Clover Park. That means 10 percent, one out of every 10 students, has missed time from school for discipline response problems. Lakes High School is a little bit better. They're a 33 percent scorer in math, 38 percent in science, and 64 percent in English. They graduate 83 percent. But the difference between Clover Park and Lakes as far as attendance is Clover Park only has 49.8 percent regularly attend, and according to the statistics, 99 percent of the students attend Lakes on a regular basis. I just don't know that if the improvement doesn't show up one of these years, that what are we throwing our money into? I think something has to happen at the school level. To say you have an award-winning district board, well, if they win an award, what's that do for the kids? Where's the demand that they do better? Where's the demand that the teachers improve? I mean, I've been here for 42 years, and scores haven't gotten any better. They've gotten downhill ever since I've been there. My youngest child, I took out of the Clover Park School District, sent it to the Curtis because school was better there. I'm a product myself of a parochial school, public school, and private school. So I know how it works, and I know how important this is to the people in the military who attend here at Clover Park. My wife fought for a long time with the PTAs in the school district. She fought for passage of legislation down at the Olympia, but we're not pleased with the results we're seeing now. And I don't know if I can support the levy, and I don't know if you should support it either. Just look at the test scores and see what the results are. Thank you.
It appears to be all the people not only signed up but stepped forward to speak. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at public hearing? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public hearing regarding Clover Park School District replacement levy? Searing none, I declare public hearing closed. Now move to the regular agenda, excuse me, ordinances. Ordinance number 726, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 726, deleting the current and adopting a new Lakewood Municipal Code Title 18A Land Use and Development Code and adopting related amendments to Lakewood Municipal Code Titles 1, 3, 12, 14, 17, and 18B.
Before I call in Ms. Spear, I just note for those of you in attendance that the council vote with respect to whether or not to endorse the Clover Park School District levy is not on the agenda tonight. That will be handled in another regular meeting later. Ms. Spear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Tiffany Spear with the Community Economic Development Department. Starting on page 60 of your packet this evening is the information regarding this item. There is a draft ordinance that starts on page 70, and then you'll see Exhibits A and Exhibits B, which are both lengthy. They include the amendments to all of the chapters other than Title 18A related to this, and then Exhibit B is the full new 18A. Within the memo that starts on page 60 itself, excuse me, there's information about the procedure that's happened to date. You've had three study sessions and then a public hearing on this issue since October 28th of this fall, and then tonight is action, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor. Starting on page 61, you'll see that a few amendments have been included in the document due to internal conversations, some stakeholder feedback, and some public comment that was received. Those are listed in bullet list on page 61, and so that's in your current Exhibits A and B. And then starting at the bottom of page 61, for the next few pages, you'll see a table which has city response to Councilmember Branstadter's comments, broken out by section. And so these are not currently included in the full packet, but what you'll see within each of the right-hand column cells is the statement CEDD recommendation, and there may be no change recommended from the staff. It may be amending it exactly as requested or mentioned by Councilmember Branstadter, or there may be some other type of amendment proposed. So that would be subject to council consideration and action this evening. Other than that, the document has been before you several times, and I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
I will make sure that Ms. Spear remains available for questions if we start wandering down hallways on this. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to get discussion going.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Ms. Moss. We adopt ordinance number 726. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as Ms. Spear mentioned, following our last study session and in the public hearing, I submitted some comments to staff, and I appreciate the fact that they gave them all consideration, and most of them dealt with trying to provide clarity or resolve things of where there perhaps was a conflict, and a couple of them were some thoughts for some minor but substantive change. And in some cases, they provided back a rationale of why they felt that no change was needed, and quite honestly, I'm convinced on those, that they did that. But as Ms. Spear mentioned, in order to incorporate the recommended changes from the Community Economic Development Department, I would move that we amend the ordinance to adopt the Community and Economic Development Department recommendations that are in the table that begins on page 61 of the request for council action with this motion not including implementing anything of where they recommended no change.
So that would be 61, page 61 to 69 in the packet.
It would be 61 through... I have, I have 68 unless I'm missing a page. 69, there's a couple of lines on page 69.
So it's been moved to amend the motion to pass ordinance number 726 to incorporate the amendments as recommended by the Community and Economic Development Department contained on pages 61 through 69 of the packet. Is there a second on the amendment?
So seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Spear, do you have any comment with respect to the department's recommendations?
No, thank you.
There's no further discussion, and I call the question on the amendment to the motion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Amendment carries. We now consider the motion as amended. Is there further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment that I am going to be happy to vote in favor of this ordinance. This is nearly two years' worth of work to move forward, to make, you know, impactful change that will affect the future, future of our community. And it's not just work by ourselves, it's not just work by the staff, there's a great deal of effort by the Planning Commission, and also a significant number of stakeholder groups that came together to try to put, give their input in effort to help make our city, city be better. There were a couple of significant things that I particularly wanted to highlight that are of significant improvements. You know, when we entered into this, we were greatly concerned about the understandability of our existing code, and this revision, the 400 and some pages, is, has accomplished a lot of that greatly, you know, that I would particularly note that permitting was a topic that frequently was mentioned by the community to us about being able to go and do that. They didn't understand the processes, the what, the how, and the how long, that, you know, and I am glad to say that I see in this document a great deal of clarity, at least with respect to expectations that the public can have of the city and that the city can have of itself. And that is probably most significantly upper catered by the table that's on page 214 and 215 of our packet, where for every type of permit that we have, there is a column that speaks to the review time limits so that people can know when they can, how long they can expect a different type of permit to be able to go through the process and be approved, and that the associated other items in that section provide that if for any reason a permit can't be approved in those limits, that the city is committed to giving them a communication about the reasons why, okay, and when they can expect it to do that rather than just leaving it, well, just more time to do that. And that's going to, I think, do a lot to do that, particularly as we go through and internally hold ourselves to doing the very best we can in this vast majority of cases to meet these review time limits on these different types of permits. I think there are other great improvements in this thing over there, and we worked through, the sign code is a separate issue, but it is incorporated into this, and it was something that moved forward. So even though we expected this to be done a year ago, the fact that it's done now, okay, is a great value because it is done well, and I think that we are there. Now, that's not to say that any 454-page ordinance can be perfect. I think that it leaves us with some challenges that we have to pick up, and we cannot just say we are going to pass this and we're good for a decade. That I think as we look at the year ahead of us and we look at one of the, some of the things that we want to address in the areas of housing, across the whole spectrum of housing, from affordable housing but also into the complete mix of housing stock in the city and where it would be, and influence and providing the necessary incentives to get the private sector to be engaged in that. You know, that is not something that this document fixed, but it's a part of the solution as we move forward and have to, and need to address it in the future year. And it doesn't address the too many. And it doesn't address the too many non-conforming uses that we have in the city, okay? And how to go about providing some incentives to bring non-conforming uses either into compliance or moved on elsewhere. Those also are things that move on going on. And at the last meeting, I asked the council members to take a look at the issue around shopping centers, okay, as it was addressed by the draft ordinance. And I, in addition to that, I've looked at it myself, and I've had some discussions with staff. And I've come to see that while I think that there is a problem with the strip mall-type shopping center and the role we want that to have in the future of our city, that I think that I'm not looking today to move into any sort of quick fix because there isn't one, okay? And instead, even though the staff provided some recommendations of something that we might do as an interim measure tonight, I'm not necessarily in favor of doing that. I am in favor of the recommendation of, as we start the new year, and the Planning Commission will be looking around for things to do, that we ask them to look at this issue as a way to get at it, along with the issues of housing and other things that we're going to ask them to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Whalen?
I just want to make a comment to thank the staff and the Planning Commission that put a lot of time into this. You know, from a policy perspective, we wanted something that's easier to use and friendlier to the development community. And I believe in the mantra that the perfect is the enemy of the good. This is probably far from perfect at this stage, but it's a lot better than what we had. I, for one, look at the development timetables and the permit timetables, as Ms. Barth and I were commenting about in the pages that Mr. Bransdeter referenced. And I, you know, me thanks 90 days to get a demolition permit. Eh, that's a little long. But, you know, that said, let's see how this works and how well it is massaged and worked with through the development community. And if we need to make tweaks over the course of time, we can do that. So I appreciate your work. I'm ready to pass it.
I'd also like to add my thanks to Dave and Courtney and Tiffany and others who've worked so hard on this for so long. There's a lot of grinding that goes on, and I think you are about to pull off one of the most difficult tasks in government, which is that you simplified regulations and cut hundreds of pages out. That doesn't happen. People add, but they don't subtract. They confuse, but they don't clarify. And so, as Deputy Mr. Whalen indicated, while it may not be perfect, I think it's very good. So thank you again for all your hard work on this. We know it's a lift that's very heavy, and it took a long time, and it's a quality piece of work. So thank you very much. Mr. Simpson.
I would just like to echo what the mayor said. A couple of public study sessions ago, I had mentioned that we needed to take the car out for a drive. And I want to thank particularly Mr. Buwer because one of the first things he said to me a week later was, yeah, we had a complete stranger come in here. And it worked. Mr. Buwer, I appreciate that. I know I can be a bit challenging with some of my questions, but whenever you take a car out and it works, and it works as well as this one did, I think I even compared it to a Maserati, you've done well. And I appreciate that. And Ms. Spear, I also appreciate your efforts because you made this clear for history majors like me to understand. Thank you very much.
I'll call for the question. While in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. Done deal. Thank you. We now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business coming for the council?
There's none, Mayor.
New business? I would entertain...
Mayor, reluctantly, very reluctantly, we would ask that you take action to cancel next Monday's study session. However, if there's something that you would like to talk about, I'm game.
That would be our, probably the only reason to come to that study session, is to have another meeting with Ms. Barth.
But actually, in all seriousness, Mayor, if you wish to cancel that meeting, we need
you and your colleagues to take action on that.
I'd entertain a motion to cancel the Monday, December 23rd, study session.
I didn't hear a second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Barth. It was her last official duty. Seconded by Ms. Moss to cancel the December 23rd study session.
Can I just give me a comment? Do we have a comment before we vote?
Yeah.
If I recall, Councilmember Barth remarked, or was it you, Ms. Moss, something about how the two kept the rest of us in between in line. This is a prima facie example of what they said, therefore demonstrating the wisdom of the two women who serve on this council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm tempted, but I'm not going to make a comment. While in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Nay.
Let the record show that Mr. Whalen is going to be by himself here on December 23rd. Motion carries. Reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I'd like to first call up our Assistant City Manager for Community and Economic Development, David Buwer, who'd like to give you an update on our cost recovery analysis specific to development services.
Oh, I'm sorry. Planning Manager Courtney Brunel.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I am here to present an update to the Development Services Team Cost Recovery, which was last reviewed in 2015. Following that last report, the council adopted a goal that Development Services try to achieve 85% cost recovery by 2021. And given that we're only two years away from that goal date, Community and Economic Development, Public Works Engineering, and Finance all work together to prepare this report in order to inform council of where we stand today and recommend how we can close the remaining cost recovery gap. The cost recovery report in total was broken into seven sections. Keeping in mind that I'm one of the last presentations separating you from a well-deserved winter break, I'm going to focus on those items that relate most closely to the recommendations. A comprehensive summary of the report findings can be found on page three. Development Services is comprised of four divisions: current and long-range planning, building, and public works. These divisions fall generally under two departments: Community and Economic Development and Public Works Engineering. On pages four and five of the report, you can see that we have broken down the cost recovery rate for both departments. Currently, Community Development is estimated to be averaging 83% cost recovery, and Public Works Development Services is averaging 50% cost recovery. These numbers have improved since 2015, when CED averaged 63%, and Public Works averaged 13% cost recovery. However, there is still a gap between where we are today and that 2021 council goal. In an effort to close the gap, in November of this year, the council approved amendments to the fee schedule, which is expected to help the Community Development Department achieve 85% cost recovery by 2021. Those fee adjustments are listed on page nine of the report. Following the list of recently adopted amendments, our team prepared fee comparisons for land use, building, and public works permits comparing Lakewood to other cities in the Puget Sound. The Lakewood fees used for comparison are the fees in the existing fee schedule, not those that were recently changed. By and large, the tables show that when compared to the average of jurisdictions selected for this analysis, Lakewood charges less for building, land use, and public works permits. The recent fee amendments will primarily impact planning permits, as well as the hourly rate, which will impact all three divisions. The Development Services Team is a true team in the sense that we, many of our permits require review from multiple divisions. In Section 6 of the report, which begins on page 19, our team reviewed the actual amount of time Development Services staff spends on various permit types. Overall, we found that the majority of our time, 62%, is spent processing permits, with the remaining time spent on non-fee-related activities. Also shown in this table is the amount of time different divisions spend on permit types. In our fee structure, fees are largely categorized by department. For example, building permit revenue is shown under the Community Development Cost Recovery, and right-of-way permit revenue is allocated towards public works, although many of our permits require review from each division. In other jurisdictions, including Federal Way and Tacoma, they charge an additional review for each internal city department. In Lakewood, we charge a zoning certification fee for building permits, which accounts for the amount of time the planning division reviews for building permits. No such fee exists for public works. It appears that one reason public works cost recovery is lower than Community Development's is that nearly 20% of their time is dedicated to building, land use, and pre-application conference review and preparation, but there are no assigned revenues for these activities. If the city were to move the proportionate fees from the Community Development to public works, then Community Development's cost recovery would be under the 83% we see today. Ultimately, if the city desires to achieve 85% across all Development Services divisions, we may need to adjust the current fee structure. Which brings us to the recommendations section of the report, beginning on page 23. In total, there is one general, one policy, and three fee schedule recommendations. For next year's work planned, Development Services will prioritize the partnership with Pierce County and the onboarding of the PALS permitting system. The PALS system includes features that we believe will make permitting more efficient and improve the customer service experience. Given the anticipated efficiencies, once the PALS system is fully onboarded, we recommend reevaluating our existing staffing levels. For the policy recommendations, we recommend updating Table 18, which is the large table that illustrates the amount of staff time spent on departmental tasks every two years as part of the biennial budget and fee schedule update. Last, for fee recommendations, the Development Services Team would propose three changes to the fee schedule. First, related to appeals. Currently, appellants pay $450 to appeal any administrative decision by the Community Development Department, which includes land use and building permit decisions, abatements, or decisions regarding licensing. This amount does not cover the full cost of the appeal, which range from $500 to $3,500, or most recently, we received and processed an appeal that cost nearly $10,000. Moving forward, the city can explore options to split the cost of the hearing examiner fees, which totaled $155 per hour, with appellants. Alternatively, we may consider collecting a hearing examiner deposit upfront in addition to the existing fee. The second fee recommendation is to add a fee based on the hourly rate to building and land use permits that require public works review. On Table 22, found on page 25, there is an outline of the proposed fee adjustments, which would be added separately to those identified permit types. In this recommendation, there were two proposed options. Option one would be to add the flat fee to various permit types identified in Table 22. Option two would be to request public works staff to record the amount of time they spend reviewing building and land use permits and collect those fees at the time of permit issuance. This recommendation is estimated to add approximately 7% more revenue to the public works department. Lastly, we recommend increasing public works permitting fees to match the $92 hourly rate adopted by the city council in November. Assuming that public works permit activity remains consistent, the fee adjustments outlined in Table 23 are expected to result in public works engineering achieving 85% cost recovery. For next steps, if it is acceptable to the council, we will come back in 2020 with the three fee schedule adjustments discussed this evening. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Brunel. Mr. Bransdeter.
Yes, I... Thank you. And there's a good bit to digest in the report. But do I understand that even though we, 30 days ago, approved a fee structure to be effective in 2020, the recommendations here are to change that fee structure to also be effective in 2020? Or are you bringing us something in 2020 to be effective in 2021?
We would be bringing you something in 2020 to be effective either later in 2020 or in 2021. So these are in addition to those recommendations made in November.
So the, what I gathered from your report was the, these recommendations are framed to move us towards what the council approved in policy as the target percentages for cost recovery in the various parts of the city: public works, community development, parks, Did you do any assessment as to whether the targets should be adjusted, perhaps downward?
We did not.
And I, you know, because I don't know exactly how that is, you know, that's also an element of comparison and the fact that to operate on the assumption that a few years ago, the council got it right is not necessarily, you know, the only way to look at how to change things. You know, we were, I think the principles are right of where we're looking at. Fees are a combination of looking at how much of something is a very personal benefit to someone who's requesting it, and how much of the cost of an effort that goes into public works, community development, and things in parks for the broad benefit of the public that we do that work, to be able to go and do that. So I don't have a recommendation of adjusting those percentages, but I would, before we just came back and with recommendations, to say, here's how you meet those requirements that the council put in policy, to do an evaluation about whether the policy could deal with some adjustment. I know that, you know, that there's a, we can probably do that using algebra rather than calculus, so we should probably do that.
Any other questions? Just make a comment that's personal to me. I'm particularly concerned regarding the path that the proposed fees related to appeals may take. I'm concerned about access to justice, that somebody would have to pay in order to an appeal as the decision, which is ultimately found to be an error by the city. I wouldn't be comfortable voting for anything that imposed a fee on a citizen when they won an appeal, because it's our job to get it right from an administrative standpoint to begin with. So I'd just like to see that addressed as we go forward. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Whalen?
The cost recovery analysis, I understand the enunciated policy in '15 was 85% for both public works and community and economic development?
Yes.
So kind of tagging on Mr. Bransdeter's comments, does it make sense, now that we've had a few years under our belt, that we shoot as high for the public works portion of the recovery? Because there is perhaps more of a public benefit, general benefit with the work that's done on the public works side, perhaps. I mean, there is on the community economic development as well, but I'm wondering if it's an opportunity for us to re-review the policy announcement.
One of the things that the Public Works Department is currently working on is a uniform right-of-way permit for utilities and things of that nature that may get to some of the issues that you are talking about. They do not have that done yet, but my expectation is in the first quarter of 2020, they're going to present something to the utility companies. That might get to some of the equity issues that you're discussing.
Because my big concern in all this, I think it's fine that we're doing what we can to adequately, you know, protect the general fund in a sense by making sure that development pays its fair share. What I don't want to do is get to the point where people look at us askance and say, it's really expensive to do business and development work in Lakewood. I would really hesitate. I know we're not quite there yet, but anecdotally, we hear all sorts of stuff, but that would be my concern.
If I could address that very briefly, I think, you know, one of the things we do in Lakewood is that your permit valuation tables for building permits is one of the lowest in Pierce County.
I saw that, yeah.
And I think one of the reasons we're able to keep our 83% or roughly that level of cost recovery is controlling a number of FTEs, the level of industrial development, and the actions that we take on enforcement for illegal construction. Those are... Those are the things that we use to get us to 83%, 80, 85%. And there are other communities who use 70%. Lacey uses 70%, for example.
For their target, right?
For their target, but it's really up to the council to tell us what it is that they would like to see as a target. So that policy can change based upon your direction.
Got it. Great.
Anything else for Ms. Brunel and Mr. Buhr? Well, thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates. First off, I'd like to recognize some city staff with some great work behind the scenes that I think a lot of folks aren't aware goes on. First is our Public Works Engineering Department. Once again this year, the employees, they sponsored internally a gift drive to provide a number of gifts and opportunities to folks in the Silicon and Woodbrook neighborhood, and that occurred about a week and a half ago. Likewise, the Lakewood Officers Charity, for the 15th year in a row, had their helping hand, where they helped a number of families with Christmas dinners, including turkeys, last week. And then, of course, on Saturday, there was Coco with the Cops, which was a fantastic showing of folks who came out and participated in that. And then on Sunday, our police officers also hosted a shop with the cops at Walmart. It's a great partnership between our police department and Walmart. And again, a number of kids and their families were able to enjoy and get some presents for the Christmas season. So I just wanted to, you know, recognize and thank all of our city employees who participated in that. You know, it's a real positive reflection on who they are, not just as city employees, but individuals, and the caring that they, that they bring to their job day in and day out, and those are prime examples of, of what they do and how they conduct themselves. Next up, I have some qualified good news. Heard a little after 6:00 PM Pacific Standard Time, that the Defense Community Infrastructure Program is going to be funded at $50 million as part of the omnibus bill that's going to come before Congress and then ultimately the president by the end of the week. It's expected to go to the House for action on Wednesday, followed by the Senate on Thursday, and then the president has, we understand, has said that he is not going to veto it and will sign it on, on, on Friday. But again, I think as we all know, anything can happen back in Washington, D.C., so I just wanted to state it's qualified good news. You know, the mayor and I were back there last week, and we were hoping for 75 million. However, somewhere in conference, it got knocked down to 50 million. However, we are standing by. We had a good discussion with Office of Economic Adjustment last week as well. And one of the things I will likely be bringing back to you in January is a, a recommendation to move forward with the design of Washington Boulevard. It'll probably be upwards of $1 million to do that, but I think, as you know, that's a 13, $14 million project. As part of one of the requirements with OEA, or rather, not a requirement, but probably will give us a good, strong leg up, is to try and get it as shovel-ready as we can. And given the size of that project, it's probably about, you know, nine months to get that fully designed and to get it shovel-ready, you know, similar to what we're doing on Onyx and Veterans. But again, I'm going to be meeting with our team internally this week, and it is likely I'll be bringing back a recommendation to move forward with design sooner, rather than waiting until we actually get the federal, the federal money. I think it'll place us in a much, much better, better position, so more to follow on that. The National Cyclocross Championship went very well this weekend. Got a lot of positive feedback from the folks that participated out there. There was about 2,000 riders represented from just about every state in the Union, as well as some folks from, from overseas. And then, of course, there was upwards of 10,000 or 12,000 spectators over the course of the week that came out. Of course, the heaviest traffic was on Saturday and Sunday during the junior, and then the regular championship rides that, that, that occurred. And while, you know, the city, there's been a number of cyclocross events at Forest Silicon Park over the past couple of decades, this was an opportunity for, you know, local folks to be introduced to this sport, and a number of folks also participated, including one of our employees, actually, Jeff Cotta, who works in our, in our O&amp;M crew. So he was out there. I'm not quite sure how he did, but just the fact that he got out there is a, good for him. You know, this was a collaborative effort between all of our city departments. Of course, want to recognize Mary Dodsworth, our Park and Rec Director, and her team for taking the lead on this, but really was a coordinated effort between our Public Works Engineering Department, Police Department, as well as Community and Economic Development. Also, kind of a footnote, our information technology team, they were asked to come out and try and help get a feed through our fiber system so that they could broadcast, they being the championship folks, could broadcast live on ESPN. And Ken White and his team, they were able to do that. And that was kind of an unexpected surprise, that the Cyclocross folks wanted to express some, some, some thanks there. So great work by, by Ken and his team. In the end, the comment that we got back was, this is the best CX course we've ever had, which I think says, says it all. Also, it could put the, you know, our community in Forest Silicon Park on the, on the map for, you know, these types of events, whether national or international, in, in, in the future, and so. And then lastly, just wanted to point out that Travel Tacoma is going to be doing their economic analysis in terms of what the economic impact was, not just to Lakewood, but to our region. It's probably going to take them a few months to get to that, but once we have that, we will share that, share that with you. We were recently contacted, actually, our Parks and Rec Director, Mary Dodsworth, was recently contacted by a realtor who is working with the Stockman Family Living Trust. They own a couple of properties on Military, on Military Road, adjacent to Washington Park. And before they kind of put it on the general market, they've approached the city to see if those two properties would be something that the city of Lakewood would be interested in acquiring to expand Washington Park in some shape, form, or manner. And the two parcels are, if you, if you're driving on Military and you take a left into the parking lot, so then there's a parcel with all the gnomes and such, it's the next two after that. So those are the two properties that the Stockmans own, and it's in a trust, but again, they wanted to give the city first opportunity at that, and so Ms. Dodsworth is going to meet with them, and once we have some information, we will, we will bring that, bring that back to you, unless I hear from you that that's not something that you want to pursue. But I would presume expanding our parks is something that you would have an interest in wanting to do.
Take a look at it, yeah.
You know, Mr. Buhr was here this evening with his team, you know, focused on Title 18A and Development Services and a number of things. Another area that he's focusing on is our multi-family tax exemption program, and, you know, he's, he's looking to streamline that whole process. Actually, quite frankly, this is being driven by some work that's going on down in Olympia in terms of the state legislature perhaps making some changes to this, this program. One of the things that we have learned is Lakewood is very detail-oriented when it comes to this program, including the fiscal analysis that we do in evaluating and justifying to this body projects that, you know, should be, should be approved. It is something that has caught the attention of those down in Olympia, and matter of fact, a lot of cities are like, no, we don't want to be required to do what Lakewood does. You know, ultimately, that's up to a higher authority, but it just shows that, you know, the level of, of, of detail that we go through with this. Mr. Buhr does have a suggestion in, in terms of changing our current code, and, you know, basically wants to remove the two-step process because we have both a tax incentive urban use center boundary, and then a residential target area boundary, and we believe you just need one. And so we would like to bring that forward to you probably sometime in, probably about the middle of 2020 or latter part of 2020, and probably put it on the Planning Commission's work plan. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that. Kind of just simplify, when folks come in, they know what they're dealing with. Last week, you had a conversation regarding the MLK Day celebration event. You know, this is not a committee that's appointed by the City Council, however, it is a city-sponsored event. And Ms. Dodsworth and I had a, you know, a brief conversation, and what we'd like you to consider is that when your board, committee, and commission work plans come forward at your first study session in January, that you might want to think about including this group as a City Council-appointed group for the simple reason that you're funding it, the city pays for it, it's a city-sponsored event, you know, the staff is, you know, is a part of that. But rather than creating it as a separate committee, maybe consider including it as part of your Arts Commission as a, as a subcommittee. I would just throw that out there to try and alleviate some of the comments that we heard at your, at your meeting last week. So again, just wanted to put that out there as a potential option there. Wanted to recognize Mary McDougal, our HR Director, who has been voted by her colleagues to serve on the Washington Public Employee Labor Relations Association for, for three years. You know, Ms. McDougal is, you know, one of the finest HR professionals I've certainly had an opportunity to work with, so they're fortunate to have her serve, serve on that, serve on that board. The, the Public Works Engineering Department is moving forward on a number of projects. We're going to hit the ground literally at a sprint in 2020. Veterans Drive and Onyx, actually, we're going to be giving the council an update as part of your first meeting in January on, on those two projects. Also, 100th and Lakewood Drive, the Traffic Signal Project, which is also going to include some sidewalk connections along 100, some missing links there. The Silicon 88th to Custer Overlay Project is also moving forward, and then we got some water quality retrofit projects. So those are all expected to be let out for contract in the January, February timeframe with council consideration, probably in the March, March timeframe. So again, we're going to hit the ground literally running in, in 2020, and these are some really big projects, some large, large, large projects. And then as we look out beyond the new year, this is the last meeting of the year, kind of the next major event is on January 10th at 10:00 AM, 62nd Airlift Wing is going to have their change of command over at Hangar 3. On January 15th, which I believe is a Wednesday or a Thursday morning, the Tacoma-Pierce County Chamber of Commerce is going to have their annual Horizons Economic Forecast Event downtown Tacoma. And then at the latter part of January, on the 28th and 29th, AWC is going to have their annual City Action Day. And that's usually, usually on one of those days, we try and set appointments with our legislators on the 28th and the 29th to check in as a follow-up to the conversation we had a couple of weeks ago with them. And then on February 1st, of course, we have the 16th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Celebration Event over at Harrison Prep. And then that evening, Caring for Kids is having their Happy Hearts and Dinner Auction over at the McGavick Center. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Questions for the same editor? Mr. Whalen?
Are we going to have a city table at the Tacoma Chamber Horizons? Was it breakfast or luncheon or something like that?
I don't know. We usually only have a few people that attend that, like two or three at the most, so unless the council as a whole is interested, probably not. Typically, we've had like, maybe like, for example, three staff usually go. But if you're interested in attending that, let, let us know, please.
Yeah, I would like to go, but I thought if we had a group, that would be great.
Mr. Bransdeter?
Yeah, I appreciate your comments about the multi-family tax exemption program and the, the information that the council gets whenever there's someone that's interested in availing themselves of that, and that, and that we're able to make decisions that are based on some data, rather than just, this is a good program, we should approve as many of them. I had a discussion with a council member from Tacoma, and, you know, and, and, and he was telling me that he was really surprised to learn that they'd been approving these right and left and to approaching 3,000 units. And while the units had been created, that only about 60 of them had turned out to actually be affordable housing units, the rest had all been, been, were providing tax incentives for market race, market rate units, and they're, so they're trying to deal with how to, to fix their process so that they have a better view of what it is that they're approving, rather than just when something comes in front of them to be able to go and do that. Made me appreciative of the fact that, you know, we look closely at, at saying, how impact, are these things really going to do something to do that? And so while that has resulted in us perhaps approving fewer than in other jurisdictions, might, I think it is caused us to generate a greater percentage of units being affordable than, than is happening in other cities that are just having the program to have the program.
We'll move to council comments. Ms. Moss?
Actually, Mayor, I just say, I just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. So that's it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to stop by Coco with the Cops and watch the interaction with the students and with the children and the police. I enjoyed that a lot. And on Thursday, I will be attending the 62nd Airlift Wing Holiday Party, based with Ms. McCoy.
Thanks. Mr. Bransdeter?
Well, I would just like to thank all of you for a good year. You know, I think we've accomplished a, a good number of significant things, things this year, that we've also sort of kept our vision in mind as we move forward, and we're, you know, four years into, into, into the vision, being able to go forward and do it. And so I think that, you know, we've been doing our part on the policy side and benefited from having a staff that has done their part in the trenches to, to get, to get things done, and then that, but I do, I do look forward to the challenges of the next year, and, you know, and I, and I know that there will be some, and I wish you all a great holiday season, and see you on the other side.
Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to echo what Councilmember Bransdeter and City Manager Caulfield said, and to wish each and every one of you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I, I will miss you, Marie. But Councilmember-elect Farmer, I am looking forward to having you with us as we move forward into 2020. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And you won't have to take the pictures next meeting. Mr. Whalen?
Well, it's been a busy year, as we all know, and certainly it was a busy week this last week. I attended the Community Engagement Leadership Team meeting that the district, Clover Park School District has. As you may recall, we are working toward a large event scheduled for February until a few of us put the brakes on it when we realized there's only one more meeting for planning left between now and February. So again, the, the focus there is to come up with some programming, not only for the students, by way of some mentorship opportunities using existing agencies, but also potentially for the parents, by way of a parent academy, to kind of ensure that there's a caring adult in the life of every child in the district. So that's the goal. We'll see what happens, but I just want to let you know that the major event that was tentatively planned for February will likely be moved out to March or April, location-dependent. Went to Coco with Cops on Saturday. I was there fairly early, and it looked like there was a great crowd, and everyone had a great time, followed by some work on behalf of Lakewood Rotary with a bunch of folks packing bags for Emergency Food Network. I think we packed about 1,000 bags of food with a very large team of folks there, so that was, again, certainly work well done, so I enjoyed that. And then with regard to some of the public comment tonight on the school levy, I know that's going to come before us for some public consideration, I believe in January on the 16th. I don't know if we can get it by then, but I think it might be helpful, at least for me, to get some objective data from the district and SPI as to the test scores and, and there's graduation rates over the last five to 10 years, just so we have that, because we hear that all the time. I anecdotally believe there's been some improvements made, but it would be kind of nice to have that in front of us if the school district is gracious enough to get that for us. So take a look at that. So again, it's been a good year, a positive year. We've done a lot of great things together. I bid you adieu but not farewell, because we've been around the block a long time together, Marie, so.
We'll talk to each other weekly.
Yeah, exactly. She's going back to my homeland, Montana, so I'm a native Montanan by birth, so I'll have to come by and see where you're hanging your shingle out there. Welcome to you, Ms. Farmer. We look forward to having you, council- We look forward to having you, Councilmember-elect. And then I just want to let you all know, one thing that the manager failed to mention is that there is a Civic Leaders Tour that's being sponsored on the twenty-fifth. It's going to be in a sleigh with a few different large animals with antlers, but I think in one of his rare, well, actually frequent moments, the Grinch decided to cut that program, so the Civic Leaders Tour to the North Pole will not happen on the twenty-fifth. So if you're disappointed about that, you have Mr. Caulfield to thank. I hope you have a great holiday season nonetheless.
I would just like to say, why would this year be any different? You've worked with me for six years now.
He tried to get Space Age Logic at Elmendorf to lay over, and it didn't work out.
I have to say that tomorrow night, I'm sitting down with our children to watch The Grinch That Stole Christmas, Dr. Seuss', and then we're going to watch one with Ben Benjamin Cumberbatch in it, but John, I think you're fit for the role. I really think you'd fit.
That'd be typecasting. When you look it up on Wikipedia, there's a picture of it right there. So that said, Washington Park, while we're looking at it, we also may want to see if we want to redirect our legislative priorities with respect to capital budget requests. The word I get is three-quarters of a million dollars for license, Fort Silicon Park is D O A, and that, that isn't a good ask. Yeah, it's higher than what we ask, and then immediate reaction from a couple legislators was that's not going to fly. So maybe a more modest one, like acquiring parkland or something else may be a good redirection. I would note that when you, we talked about the cycle cross, you mentioned that people were coming from around the country. After DuPont Mayor Mike Quartz, U.S. Military Academy Class of nineteen eighty-one, dried his tears from the Army-Navy game, he, he harassed me by indicating that while there were no Navy teams in cycle cross, the U.S. Military Academy actually had a team at that event, and they did quite well, I guess. So that's about as far away nationally as you can get, so interesting. The, what? Yeah.
A little bit.
Yeah, big time. The, as a manager indicated, we were in Washington, D.C., Tuesday through Thursday. Our Wednesday morning schedule opened up before we got there, then we, we had an opportunity to visit former Sixty-Second Air Wing Commander Colonel Reva Sonkis, who soon, I guess in April puts her star on, who is commander of the Eighty-Ninth Air Wing, which is the owner of Air Force One, Air Force Two, and some other really cool things. And so she spent an inordinate amount of time with us, more than expected, and pretty much got a V I P tour of behind the scenes at, at Andrews. That afternoon, we met with Air Force Installations, the Office Assistant Secretary. Ironically, the Assistant Secretary for Installations, who we've come to know pretty well, was here at J B L M. So, but the Air Force continues to acknowledge its fiscal responsibility for the clear zone and is cognizant of the fact that they have to keep finding operational money each year. In addition to that, we will be looking at repi money for those parcels that straddle the line. Ironically, repi can't be used for clear zone, but it can be used to acquire a parcel that is partially outside of the clear zone. So it's a combination of those two sources, plus the local match that will continue with the program. With the cooperative agreement in place with the Army and the Air Force's acknowledgement, we need to keep reminding them that we need money every year, but it is not, it's come so far in the last ten years, it's, it's amazing, and hopefully we can solve that problem once and for all, but it may take a while. We also met with the Office of Economic Adjustment on Wednesday, Director Patrick O'Brien, who we've come to know pretty well, and in what was described by our lobbyist as a sardonic manner, he gave us any number of insights, which, some of which you probably wouldn't want to be quoted on, but he, they are, on the one hand, looking to preserve their survive, survive as an entity, they're called the fourth estate, the non-uniform Department of Defense agencies that are peripheral, and there's some internal resistance to their continued existence. On the other hand, they are tasked with the D CIP program of implementing it, so that's a good thing for, for their survival. Our Congress members are, are very supportive of OEA and in positions to make sure that that's preserved. He gave us a, a very detailed roadmap of what he, he expects, which I take to be the program that he's had in his computer for close to a year now. He'll push a button and, and here are the rules. And so we are well-aligned to be at or near the front of the line for that funding, in addition to the fact that they're well-aware that this was a, an initiative from this loca, location. And that goes to the manager's comment that we need to move forward with planning, we probably need to move forward with CIPA and line up all those ducks so that when this is signed, we can, we can plug it in and race to the front of the line. Also, we have a fairly modest project, and a third of the projects are things like hospitals and that are suggested, hospitals and schools, and they just get cut right immedi, immediately because it'd be less than one project. So they're overasked. The, while we were back there, all the problems seemed to be solved. N D A A got, came together, D CIP came together, Conference Bill on Authorization came together, administration starts to say, yeah, if you come up with this deal, we'll sign it. We said, and it just came back to take a victory lap, but it was interesting, and I swear that every time we walked by the House of Representatives, I heard Klyopie music. Senate was quite sedate, expected a cloud car on the, the other side. It was, it was a zoo. And Saturday, I went to the First Core Christmas Concert. I had an opportunity to thanks both Deputy Commanding General, who was the senior person there, and the Director of the Band for all the band's excursions into Lakewood, whether it's the parade or Summer Fest or, or Farmer's Market. And I was assured by General Graham that they really liked doing that. Not only did they get to do what they liked to do, it meant they didn't have to pull guard duty, which, understand that, he says, because we put them out on the perimeter. So that was, that was enjoyable and interesting same time. And as a final matter, I'd just like to again thank our friend and colleague, Marie Barth, for all her great service here, and it's not goodbye, it's farewell. As a last word of business, I would like to pass the gavel to her for the final word.
So I just would like to say a sincere thank you to each and every one of you. You've all been great friends, continue to be so pleased, and coffee, coffee with the mayor. Hey, then I could come to that. But thank you to all the staff, and you're just great friends. And with that, we're adjourned.
All right.
All right.
Short and sweet.